All right, I'll go ahead and call the meeting of the Prattville Planning Commission to order. Um, Madam Secretary, will you call roll?
Mayor Gillespie, Councilman Bowles, Chairman Smith,
Here.
Vice Chair Gardner,
Here.
Chief Johnson, Ms. Carpenter,
Here.
Mr. Hall,
Here.
Mr. McAlley,
Here.
And Mr. Nelson.
All right, we have the minutes that were sent to us from March the 20th and from April the 17th. And I looked over them earlier. I did not bring them with me, but I did look over them. There's any comments on them, or what do we, you want to approve it?
I had one correction on the, uh, April 17th about the order of some wording. And, uh, and Ms. Morgan has made those corrections, so. And I'd move that they be approved as corrected.
All right, just our second.
Second.
Okay, we have got a second. Um, all in favor signify by raising your right hand. Opposed like some, if they pass. There is no old business. I will go on to new business, and we have a public hearing for the Buena Vista Boulevard location, plot four. Mr. Gillen, is that yours? Can you just tell the public what's going on? And yes, we're going to start off with you just telling us what's happening, and then anybody that's here can come talk to us.
Okay, all we're doing at thought should be this is, if you're doing the main Boulevard, uh, Buena Vista Boulevard. The extension of the road at the very end of it is, this is the next fifty lots that extends straight into the subdivision. And, uh, this is basically takes it all the way up to the west line. And, uh, basically this, this, this extension is final ramp to come up here to the top north out, but there'd be good ways down the road.
Yeah.
Any questions, I'll be glad.
Ladies and gentlemen, this, again, is the Prattville Planning Commission, and we're all pretty much volunteers. We're an advisory committee to the, uh, Prattville, um, City Council. What we're going to do, what we're going to do now is have a public hearing on this event. And you can come up and address us and, and, uh, ask any question or make any statement that you want to about this particular item. And it is open now for a public hearing. Would anybody like to come and comment? Well, Mr. Duke, will you come up and tell us about what the city thinks about?
Yes, sir.
We, um, we can, we're going to let Mr. Duke talk, and then we can close it.
No, okay, we need to do this this way, it looks.
Okay. Well, do you want, do we need to end the public hearing? Let's close the public hearing. Rowan, don't read it in? All right. Please.
This is a resolution preliminary plat. The Oaks of Buena Vista, Plat Four, June 19, 2014. Whereas the Oaks of Buena Vista LLC is the owner of the Oaks of Buena Vista, Plat Four. And whereas the proposed development is located inside the city limits off Buena Vista Boulevard. And whereas the sketch plan for the proposed development was approved January 5, 2006. And whereas the public hearing for the proposed development was heard on June 19, 2014. And whereas the required city departments have reviewed and commented on the proposed preliminary plat. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review of preliminary plat of the Oaks of Buena Vista, Plat Four. And I may move we do so. Mr. Chairman?
Sir, a second.
Second.
All right. We ready? All right.
Yes, sir, good afternoon. You have, as Mr. Gillen stated, a request for fifty lot, uh, expansion of the Oaks of Buena Vista subdivision. This will be Plat Four. It's roughly on eight point nine acres at the end of Buena Vista Boulevard. Typical lot sizes are forty-five feet by hundred thirty-five. Uh, this is, um, an area that you recently approved for rezoning and recommended to the City Council. And they also concur with that recommendation. Rezoning from R three to R five. City staff has reviewed this preliminary plat and finds it to be in order, and we recommend approval.
Okay. Any other comments, any questions from the Planning Commission to Mr. Duke? Looks like it's time for vote. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed like some? Thank you. Our next item, item number two is also going to be a public hearing. But following the same method is, so the public can understand what's happening. Can you please tell them, is it yours, or who's the spokesperson? Can you tell, tell us what's going to happen so they can understand that you are, what you want to do?
We're proposing to plat.
Uh, going up here.
My name is Bob Champion, I work for Home Place. We're here to present a plat of six one acre estate lots in the Home Place development.
Okay. And you're changing them from?
Well, it's, it's still within the zoning of the PUD that we've been under. So, they were originally a single family. We're just, uh, it's been market driven. We've actually had someone come to us and request this. And so we changed the plat from the original phase that we had for J to what's being presented today.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. And everyone that wishes to speak to us about this matter, if you will come in and sign in with Ms. Morgan. And then come up and tell us what your name is and where you, where you reside and what your concerns are. That we are open for a public hearing. Come on and talk to us.
Come on, Bart.
Yes, sir, Bart, and just sign in and.
My name's Bart Bush. I reside at one zero zero eight Saddle Ridge. And my question is, after looking at this, I'm one of the three houses that the lots back up to. And from what I understand, from the original plans, there was a green area supposed to be behind it. Will that remain green? Because looking at this, it doesn't. And maybe it wasn't meant to show that, but there's a green area behind us and McCall's and the other house there.
Correct, there, there's an easement that is.
Excuse me, you need to come up and speak into mic.
There's currently an easement. There's currently an easement behind here, uh, for utility behind the alleyway. And actually, before we met, one of the questions and comments that's before the Planning Commission that Joel had, uh, was addressing, um, drainage. And so it'll be addressed to actually continue and increase so that, that portion, part of that portion will stay.
Okay. What does that mean? Part of it? What, what did the original plan say?
Clyde, do you remember what the original layout, all that was?
Can you tell us who y'all are?
I'm Clyde Chambles with Chambles Engineering. The original, if I'm not mistaken, went to the center line of that drainage way, and it would stay at this. No, it's, it's wider than that. I don't know exactly, but, uh.
But that would stay green?
Yes. It would, the only way that we could change that is if everybody in that plat agreed to change it.
So that, that will remain as.
It will, it will have to.
The other question, uh, the road that turns next to us, was it in the original plan to come all the way across to Firefly?
Yes, the original, uh, concept was to have Firefly connect into, um, Barn Cut, which is Lot 29. I don't know what drawings you guys have, I hate to be talking.
We have this one. This one. And the.
What was originally done for the commission is, the first plat had between nineteen and twenty-one lots. And Firefly would have come up and done a roughly ninety degree turn and turned into Barn Cut. Um, as I told you to begin with, the reason for this, uh, reduction in density is, is because we had someone come to us. In, in their request, they didn't want it because they're actually buying the lot that backs into that. So, they didn't want the connection for Barn Cut. So Barn Cut will stop right there.
But it's been changed in the original plan already, right?
Yes. But this is a reduction from a higher density of nineteen to twenty-one lots.
Thank you.
So, they've done a hearing, and y'all proposed these changes, and it's all been done ahead of time? Or you're busy to do it?
This is the first hearings that has.
It's been found out today that that road's not going to be there.
Correct.
Another question.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Catherine McCall, and I, uh, live in Home Place at one zero zero six Saddle Ridge. Which is also one of the lots that this new development portion will back into. Um, I'm more of a visual person, and I also like to reference things I'm speaking to. So I did bring you copies of the original rendering. I labeled the green space. But this is what, um, we've discussed, and I think that's what, uh, Mr. Bush was just referencing. If you look at the, um, original rendering, which is still available and was current as of 2010. That green space that cuts through those three houses, um, if you look at the portion or the rendering in proportion to that space, even though those houses have been reduced in number, that area has been, uh, only labeled as a six foot utility easement. That will be part of the property of three of those lots. So that's not, no longer a green space, it's a utility easement that by the regulations will be respons, must be up kept by the property owner. However, the city utilities will be able to have access to that, that's my understanding. Now, the concern we had is, in any neighborhood development or addition, you want to keep the character and what's important, why people originally wanted to live there. And this is a very open neighborhood, one with a strong community where every, I'm a stay-at-home mom, I know all the other moms on the street. Our kids play together, we can see them, we know where they are. And that sense of community by not having that road circle about and by default creating a cutoff and exclusive portion of this neighborhood, I think will greatly impact the character. Not only that, to leave, uh, Barn Cut without a turnaround or access, there's a fire hydrant there, for example. And I know issues of safety actually supersede the aesthetic nature of creating that roundabout. But for an ambulance, a fire truck, a sanitation truck to be able to make that cul-de-sac turn. And also, for those people who, you know, are living on that lot that's going to back up to that house and have an unfinished road right out their window, I think is unfair. We have been asking to see these plans. This is, again, as Mr. Bush said, the first day we've seen this, so obviously we're maybe a little bit startled and emotional because what we were told at the homeowner association, um, several of these points were very contrary to what we were presented back in May. At that point, we were still told that there would be that access loop around. Again, my feeling is for emergency services, city services, county services to be able to access that, as well as traffic flow in the neighborhood. I think that's an important point that should be reconsidered. The green space between the new lots and the road, um, the way that it is illustrated in the presentation that you all and we received, does not represent what we were told and doesn't maintain the, the character of the neighborhood. And the, by leaving Barn Cut unfinished and unconnected, that's going to greatly affect the resale value for those people on the corner. It's going to affect the, um, that area of the neighborhood. And there were some other issues tangential to this that, um, as far as, I know that your sanitation department has had a couple calls from us about the sanitation truck not being able to make the, the turns. One of the, I, I invite you all to go and take a tour of the neighborhood, it's a beautiful neighborhood. It's great for kids, it's very safe. We do have the narrow streets that encourage people to slow down, but some of those turns, and I think this new cul-de-sac will probably add to it. It, it mathematically doesn't add up for a truck to be able to, to turn on that. And I think it's unfair to, to ask the city to, to bear the brunt of that when we have an opportunity in this planning phase to maybe rectify some of those issues. So I want to thank you for being so welcoming and letting us have a voice here. And I would encourage you to, to take a look at that with the, with the knowledge in mind that a lot of the residents, uh, this is not what we were, we were being presented with, and we were kind of surprised to see that.
Does anyone else, uh, wish to address us on this issue? At this time, we will close the public hearing portion. Uh, Mr. Duke? It does, um, I was wanting to make sure, or just a couple of questions that they had concerns on and allow anybody to, to, to clear up the couple of issues. And then that, that's the only reason I was going in that direction. Go ahead. You're good. Do you, um, you have anything real quick on their, their couple of concerns?
Yes, sir, I'd be glad to, uh, address any direct questions. And I mean, if you, if you're asking about, uh, the concerns, there is a, there is a tremendous amount of leeway granted with the planned unit development.
Okay.
Having to do with the width of streets, the layout of lots. Some of the concerns that were brought up about, um, lack of a turnaround or, or changing the layout of, of the street pattern. Those, you can see in comments were addressed by Mr., or referenced by Chief, Chief Johnson. Uh, and we're going to have to resolve some kind of turnaround layout, whether that be, uh, improving the ability to make a three-point turn there at the end of Barn Cut. Some type of ability to turn around. Now, the green space, uh, issue, uh, that, that has been raised with, with the, uh, the applicant. In Plat C, which is the one that contains Barn Cut and, and the lots that the folks, uh, came and spoke about. There is a, what's known as a non-buildable, um, Lot E is what it's referenced as. And it's basically in the layout you have, it shows that it was included where the, uh, the contours show the, the drainage. If you can see, you take this layout that you have in your notebook, and you find Lot Six. On the, on the southern end of Lot Six, also kind of moving into Lot Five, is an area that is a drainage way. And that was platted with, um, Plat C, which is this adjacent plat, to be a, a, a green space, a drainage way. And that would have to be included in this, this plat. Either they would have to include it or come back and find some way to remove it, uh, as allowed by whatever covenants were platted with, with Plat C. Easiest thing is just to pick it up. And I believe that's what Mr. Champion was referencing, is that they plan to include that in the final plat. That would be a non-buildable area for whoever owns Lot Six and that portion of Lot Five. And clearly, no one, no one would want to be in there disturbing that drainage way anyway. So, these are large lots, I don't foresee that being an issue. I, I think the, probably the, that the greatest concern the neighbors have is, it sounds like a change in the pattern of development. And, uh, again, the PUD zoning allows for some modification. And the, each plat has looked a little different than the, than the original sketch layout. But the, the lack of a turnaround there is a concern of the cities, and we, we think we can work that out, we just have not got, that's really the only outstanding issue at this point.
Let's go ahead and read this in. Will you read it in form?
Resolution preliminary plat. Home Place Phase One, Plat J revised June 19, 2014. Whereas Home Place Developers, Inc., are the owners of the property presented as Home Place Phase One in Plat J. And whereas the proposed development is located off Constitution Avenue at Firefly. And whereas the proposed development is located inside the city limits. And whereas the preliminary plat for the proposed development was approved with contingencies on December 15, 2005. And whereas a public hearing for the proposed development was held on June 19, 2014. Whereas the city department heads have reviewed and commented on the proposed development. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby approves the submitted revised preliminary plat of Home Place Phase One, Plat J, so moved.
Thank you. Second.
Thank you very much.
Any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I kind of got off talking about the, the questions, but I did want to point out that whether it's a cul-de-sac or a looped street, the city is, um, much more in favor of this layout than what was originally presented back in 2005. The original layout for this, uh, Plat J included nineteen lots. And they were much smaller lots, the road was pushed over a good bit further towards, this is Fayette Branch. If you, if you recall from our discussions years ago about Home Place, this is a major drainage way. It drains most of the eastern part of, of Prattville. Uh, it is a drainage way that, uh, has, I'll just generously say, it has meandered some in the last decade and continues to. Okay, so, and, and it's a deep channel, and at times, uh, large sections have broken off from the bank. And the reason it was approved with contingencies in 2005 is that we were trying to find a way to deal with that. That we did not want to see short lots pushed up against that drainage way. So this layout, in, in our opinion, is a much better adapted layout for that situation. Larger lots, good bit more distance from the edge of the bank. So I just wanted to make sure that you're aware that we, we, we have addressed those contingencies, I, I think, with this layout. As far as the character of the neighborhood and the, um, the connection of the street, that, that may still be an open question, um, for the neighbors and for the developers. So, I'm not sure how the commission wants to address that. Be glad to answer any questions.
Yes. Oh, go on, I'm, I'm. Yes, sir.
This is all new to me out here, and I wasn't here when Mr. Dunn threw it in. Are we changing, after the fact, are we changing something that was already set before? When the, you bought the houses out there, now we changing that deed on the street, making the deed even not extend on out?
Yes, sir.
Is that what we, is that what they're asking to do? Maybe I'm not making myself clear.
No, sir, I, I think you are the, uh, this is, um, beyond this, this location, there, there's nowhere else that this subdivision is supposed to go other than this little section. However, Firefly and Barn Cut were supposed to be looped together, connected, in the, in the sketch plan that was approved as a part of the, the PUD. We're talking about a significant reduction in the number of lots, though, that were originally laid out. The original layout showed, and Mr. Champion indicated, somewhere between nineteen or twenty lots that would be on Firefly instead of the six that they're proposing. So that is a difference, it is a, it is a change. It is going to a, a larger lot and creating a cul-de-sac. And the layout that, that they did, that they presented originally with the planned unit development didn't show much in the way of, didn't show any cul-de-sacs, it showed some looped streets or some streets like, uh, Saddle Ridge, which were kind of a horseshoe loop. In, in essence, a, a closed street, but, uh, a different type than the traditional cul-de-sac.
Now, does Firefly don't have a cul-de-sac?
Yes.
Correct on that color.
Yes, sir. What's proposed now is this, this drawing that you have in your packet. You can see, uh, Barn Cut here, and then Firefly is brought up and, and terminated in the cul-de-sac instead of looping around to connect.
Now, is there going to be a cul-de-sac there at the end of, uh, Barn, uh, Barn Cut?
Yes, sir, the applicant is proposing to modify.
To stop the street?
Basically, terminate the street and create some type of turnaround.
You gotta put a cul-de-sac, but you gotta put a basketball court up there, you know that, you gotta have that.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir. Mr. Hall, I apologize, could, if you could turn on your microphone so we make sure it gets recorded.
I think everybody heard me all right.
I think so, too.
I, I, I think that, uh, you gotta have a basketball court, you gotta have a cul-de-sac with a basketball court. Thank you very much.
I, to summarize maybe, three issues. One is, one we can't fix, and that's character of neighborhood. That's a discussion between you and those folks that own it. I'm not talking about Mr. Duke, I'm talking about the homeowners. And, uh, I'd suggest you, y'all all have that. The turnaround thing, they can fix, it's just a matter of city requiring them to make something where the garbage truck can turn around, get around, and safety equipment, all that. That's, that's something, that's going to be part of the plat, plat.
Yes, sir, I, I believe that's fixable at this point. If not, I'll have to come back.
Right, I think that's, that's fixable. The drainage or green space issue is fixable, too, in terms of just, okay, it's, declare part of it is unbuildable and keep it. And I think that's fixable as well. So, the remaining issues, a discussion between them, and so.
Yes, sir, I, I think Mr. Chambles indicated that, you know, that we, we pointed out to him that they have the, the parcel E that was platted with C that is going to have to be included here, and it essentially spells out what that, what its use was previously. It was to keep that drainage way open and, and essentially green. So that, that will have to be included.
Is that, is that tied up legally enough to where it has to be? Or do we need to make it as part of our formal motion in terms of approval?
But you, for a preliminary plat, I would say no. Okay? If you get down to final plat and we have resolved it, then that's a point which we will ask you to, to hold it. There's already a, part of what they're showing as Plat Six has already been platted. They're either going to have to incorporate it or come back and figure out a way to, to remove it. And the deed restrictions that were placed on that. So the simplest way, see, I put it a different way, reducing Lot Six from what it is now is allowed by the PUD zoning. Okay, they, they can go down as small as what they already had in the past.
Sure.
These are much larger than what's, what was allowed or what was expected. So, they're, they're not going to have a situation there that can't be resolved.
Okay, same is true of turnaround.
I believe that's correct.
Well.
I guess I, I'm concerned that we're going to tie it up legally enough that they gotta fix the turnaround, they gotta lay a green space.
If you hold it today, then we'll resolve and bring it back next month. If you grant it with conditions to fix these items, then we will have them resolved prior to releasing the final, excuse me, the preliminary plat for construction. Y'all have done that in the past. Regardless, these, these items that are outstanding will be resolved before they're released for construction.
Mr. Duke?
Yes, sir.
As far. As far as a turnaround versus a cul-de-sac, is it that much land that's absorbed? Because I have been there in my truck, and I do not like streets that just end. I just, I just don't like them. Uh, there's some in, um, that neighborhood above us, what is it? Emerald Mountain or that just?
Stumps.
Nah, on, on the hill, Carter, behind Carter, Lake?
Lake.
Lettina Lake, Mount, or?
Mountain Lake.
Mountain Lakes.
Thank you.
Those two are mountain lakes. Ridiculous. I just don't like the, the road to end.
Yes, sir.
Um, and so a turnaround would just be where you can do a three-point turn in a better area versus a cul-de-sac?
That would be back in, behind their houses, whatever they drive up to do a three-point, you don't have to.
For, in this, you're talking about extreme situations of a fire truck coming out there, somebody's house is burning down, they have to go in and do a, and burn it down, and go down, put the fire out, they pack it to the alleyway.
You want to do that up here? Come on up here, um, Mr. Champion. Yeah, come up and speak into the microphone. So, we got it.
The question of, and I, I guess I should have addressed this in the beginning, is I keep hearing, uh, a terminology that I, I don't want put in forced, I guess. There needs to be further discussion because when you talk about a cul-de-sac, you're talking about taking in a lot of land property and the individuals that we are talking to about this particular lot, it's going to impact that Lot Six. If that's the case, we need to go back to them and say, hey, this is what the city's going to mandate to us. Are you still okay with it? They wanted to, as little access as possible to that, that particular lot. And so therefore, if you guys, if you're talking about a three-point turnaround area where we may have to, um, and Clyde, don't let me talk out of turn. I'll run my mouth and get us all in trouble, but, um, if, uh, if you had to extend the road slightly to allow for a vehicle to go a little further in, the opening of that, if you look at it as is drawn right now, is twenty-four feet wide. There's no reason why an emergency vehicle could not back itself into that area and then pull back out. Uh, you seem confused, Mr. Hall.
No, yes, sir. It's all. Comment on that?
Yes, sir.
What was, was it originally intended for that street not to be, not to be extended?
Originally, the street would have been twenty-two feet wide or less.
No, I'm talking about further into this wooded area. Was that as far as it was going?
Barn Cut would have gone in a direction, in a east to south direction.
For further development.
Correct.
But now that is out. That's no longer.
Yes, sir.
After the fact, after the folks who bought their houses out there.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, I have a situation in my house where the garbage truck comes by my house, stops at the end of the street and backs up down the street so it can turn around, wah, beep, 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 beep. I would not buy a house right now with some heavy equipment, a fire truck, garbage truck, anything that has to turn around right at my house. I would not do it.
Garbage trucks don't. They're able to use the alleyway system.
Well, okay.
The private alleyway behind, and this is, we're talking about Phase C here, but, um, the only event that we would be talking about using a turnaround would be in the event of a fire truck coming into that area, an emergency vehicle of that size only. Garbage trucks currently now use the alleyway systems, and they're connected to Barn Cut. So a garbage truck comes behind the bushes and the halls behind Ms. Porter's house, comes up, turns right, goes to the end of the street, can turn left by the bushes, come back up, go behind the alleyways, pick up everything. So we're not talking about garbage vehicles. We're specifically talking about in the event that a fire truck has to come into that neighborhood. And I'll be perfectly honest with you, this is something that I've, I've never quite understood, um, is developing an area for a catastrophic event. I can tell you, if somebody's house is burning down in there, these neighbors are not going to care if you're running through their yard. You know, why design a?
Probably let the roof stay in the lot.
I understand that, Mr. McCollough, but it's just something, now that I've got it on my heart, I'm just going to bear you, bear to you. But before we came in, and, um, we had had discussions about how do we resolve the three-point turn to allow emergency vehicles? So that is, that will be an ongoing discussion, to, to terminate that road with the availability of an emergency vehicle to make its necessary turnaround.
That's all.
Thank you.
Is there a report available to the president at all?
Can I hear you?
She wants to know if she can come back up and address the, uh?
Sure. Come on up. Um, easy, go.
I would just like to counter the assertion that the only scenario for any sort of vehicle entering that, uh, Barn Cut would be a fire truck. The, currently, the last lot on Barn Cut is yet to be built. The road stops before the middle of that lot. It also has a fire hydrant on it, which would be an access point for a fire truck. So if my house is burning down, I'm, I, again, I don't, or if my neighbor's house is burning down, you can run through my yard any day you want, but I would like to have the infrastructure available for a sanitation truck, which would ostensibly go through there once that lot is built upon, which there are plans to do so. That is not physically the case right now. So that, there's some mixing effects going on, but.
Well, I, I'll almost guarantee you they're not going to lose that lot, so they'll fix this three-point thing where it's all right.
Well, that's, that's, that's what I would.
I can probably well assure you of that.
Thank you.
Yes.
To rebut, the rebuttal, um, the, the, um, the infrastructure for Lot Twenty-Nine that she's addressing has already been put in place. The curb was put to the end. If, uh, if you'll even look on your plat, you noticed that Lot Twenty-Nine opens up with about a forty-five, um, foot, and I'm, I'm doing this off memory and don't have my scale in front of me, but it's either forty feet or forty-five feet at front lot, and then I believe it extends out to maybe sixty in the back. So it's an odd-shaped kind of pie lot. So the infrastructure and the fire hydrant is, yes, set off there, but, uh, that, that's all been completed. I just want to, I didn't want you guys to think that we had stopped development in Phase C.
Are there any other questions? We ready to vote on this?
Let me make a comment.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
It'll take six votes for, on this, will it not? Because I'll pan on voting against it unless somebody ensures me that we're going to be do something different before this comes back, to get, come back in. Something is, yeah.
Mr. Hall, it's a preliminary plat that will require six affirmative votes.
What, what would make you happy, Mr. Hall?
Right now, I just don't know.
Would a, would a cul-de-sac make you?
No. You'd speed all the way down through there and, uh, develop risks of like you done started here.
Well, they're wanting to do the lots, the, the size of the lots are going to six lots instead of twenty lots.
Okay.
And so their main concern, their, their point is they can sell the six lots and they can't sell the twenty lots, or the, was it twenty lots, Mr. Champion?
I think you're talking about being nineteen.
Nineteen lots. They can sell them as six and they can't sell them as nineteen.
I'm sure that you guys may have let us do those nineteen lots now because of the part that Joel put.
If you will, please come and. Come on up, come on up here. I'm sorry. We want to get all this on record. We should have been having.
To, to the point of the nineteen lots, I think it would be much more difficult for me to come before you and request that plat because of the main concern that Joel brought up a few minutes ago, which is the waterway behind there.
Yes.
Since, uh, we kind of have the feeling that this might not get the affirmative that it needs to pass. Um, I'd like to move that we hold it till next month, and maybe some of these issues can be worked out, maybe plot whatever the green space is and C could be shown on so that everybody knows exactly where those lines are and what that would be. Possibly in a month, all this turnaround could be, you know, since we're not going to get anywhere today.
All right, that's, that's fine.
I would like to move that we hold this.
We have a second.
I'd like to second that.
All in favor?
Sure.
All right, we're going to hold it. Y'all get together and let's.
See you guys in a month.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. Let's take a five-minute break.
No, let's go. Let's get to it.
Three minutes? She needs to go. Oh, you're going to be excused? Oh, okay.
She just wanted to be excused.
Oh, I thought you were wanting to go. Okay, good.
She wants to leave.
You leave.
She wants to leave the building.
All right. We don't need her for anything else, and we got, we good for. We have, uh?
You got five, that's all it takes.
Item number three, repli of Avalon. What are we looking at, Mr. Duke?
You have a request, um, by the lot owners to replant lots twelve and thirteen of Block C of Avalon Forest, uh, Plat Two. Um, looking to basically plant those two lots together to create a single home site. Um, going to cautiously recommend approval at this point. The plat that was presented, uh, omits a number of easements that are currently there, but those, those are merely corrections that we will look forward before we're to sign. So, um, with the, with those caveats pointed out, I would say that this is ready for approval. Um, we're not going to let it out of the office until they correct it. I mean, there, there, there are existing platted easements that are not shown on the drawing that the engineer presented, but those are easily correctable.
Do we need to approve it with conditions or approve it with?
I'll give a motion. I, Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the replat as proposed with the corrected easements.
Sir, second.
Pardon, Bud City.
Second, Bud.
Second motion.
All in favor?
One more discussion.
All right. Need to get, all right, number four is the Oaks of, is that Oaks of Buena Vista, is that, Ron?
Yes. That's a repli.
Is that a repli of, um, another repli?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, I believe, um, Ms. Morgan was asking, is, is that was an affirmative vote on the last, right?
Yes, it was an affirmative. Ananmash. Yes, I'm sorry. All in favor? I saw there's the last two hands. All right, on the, number four, repli Oaks of Buena Vista, Plat Two A. What's going on there, Mr. Duke?
Yes, sir. Uh, you have a, a plat that, um, is adding an additional forty feet to the rear of lots thirty-four through thirty-six. Um, that property is additional property that was created by the, the preliminary plat that you just approved, and that will be added to those lots. Those lots are currently owned by the developer, and, um, see no reason to, to, we recommend approval of that repli.
You recommend?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Discuss. All in favor?
Now, you gotta get a motion. I, I move we, we repli as proposed.
Second. Thank you. All in favor? All right. Is there any business that needs to come before us? Oh, that was approved unanimously. Anything else?
No, sir.
Any concern? Meeting adjourned.